Hello, everyone. It's 4 o'clock and we're here to have a special meeting discussion around the charter high school budgets and move into our other agenda item, which is the discussion and possible approval of a tuition reduction model. To that end, a couple of things I'd like to say. One is we're moving from closed caption to live chatting. So those individuals who are unable to hear this or have other needs for us to move away from closed captioning, your options are available through the chat icon and Technology Department is doing their wonderful work, has established that. The other, for those of you who receive board packets, obviously, we've been cramming a lot of discussions around some of these items into last minute. And as a result, I know it's been taking a long time to get us the materials just because there's a lot of work to be done before we receive them. So I want to say thank you to all of you who did yeoman's work in getting this information to us so that we can at least have it in our hands and see it on screen for today's discussion. And with that, then I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call of board members. And I'll start with Ms. Maya. Mr. Hendrix. I believe I saw him on the list. Mr. Hendrix?
Present.
On the phone. So you're there?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath? I see you're on mute, Mrs. McGrath, but I see you present. However, I need you to acknowledge that. I'll come back to you. Dr. Norene?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Sarr?
I'm here.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Mrs. McGrath, I think you're still on mute. No, you're not. Are you still there? Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. And President said, therefore, there is a full complement of board members to each quorum. Our first item of business today is review discussion and approval of the Gateway Early College High School proposed budget. With that, I'm going to turn to you, Dr. Gonzalez, for the next steps on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC and guests. Welcome you to this evening's or this late afternoon meeting. And as you indicated, you will have two presentations in front of you as required by the state to approve and adopt the budget for our charter high schools, and that will be followed by continued discussion and tuition models. I want to recognize Dr. Wise in taking on the 1.0. I'm sure that she will likely introduce Principal Lisa Smith. And if I may take a moment out of possible order here, and I want to recognize Principal Smith. This will be her last presentation to the board because she is retiring after many years of dedication to the Maricopa Community College Districts. I just wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to recognize her.
Thank you. Let's clap. Yay. Thank you for your service to us.
Thank you.
Principal Smith.
Thank you.
So with that, I will turn it over either to Dr. Wise, interim president of Gateway, or directly to Principal Lisa Smith.
Thank you, Chancellor, President Sullivan, members of the board. I would like to introduce Lisa Smith, our current principal of Gateway with the Gateway Early College budget presentation.
Thank you, President Sullivan, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC and guests. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present Gateway's 2020-21 budget. I believe we have a PowerPoint to show at this time that I'll go through. There we go. Okay, so we're just comparing on this slide what 2020 and 2021 funding looks like and the numbers. We're going to increase our enrollment just a little bit. Well, I'll talk a little bit later in two more slides about why that increase is so low. So we're basically raising our ADM about three kids. State funding did go up. State base funding. The cut, because we're a small charter school, but is associated with a larger district, they do take money from us, and so this year it's going up to $116,000. Additional assistance per student went up this year as well. The small school cut is actually going down. They're phasing that out completely over a period of three years. So next year, that should be gone completely. Our Prop 301 dropped this year. And there is a note there that the 334 was actually last listed as 423 last year on our presentation, and that was a mistake. So it is going down this year. These numbers were given to us by the state very early in this year. And we fully expect that Prop 301 will drop even farther than that because that is based on tax income. We can go to the next slide if we're ready. So you can see our state-based funding and additional assistance all went up. The Prop 123, that was the land grant money, stayed the same. Prop 301 went down, but again, we do fully expect that that's going to drop farther, and we are prepared for that. Instructional improvement money is actually Native American gaming money that the casinos give the state for education. And then our federal funding, which is Title I, Title II, Title IV and IDEA, went up slightly as well. We can go on to the next one. So a couple of things. We're doing this based on 290 students. The last year, we had presented a plan to you to increase college enrollment. And one way we were doing that is we were taking in more students. So last year, we took in 100. We originally planned to take in 100 this year. But the pandemic has really slowed down our recruiting efforts, and we're right at that tipping point. So if we go from three classes, 75 kids, to four classes of freshmen, that requires hiring an additional teacher. And if we don't make that 100 kids, then it didn't make sense to hire that additional teacher. We're right at that tipping point. So we decided to hold off this year. You know, just being abundantly cautious, given that the state hasn't given us direction on exactly how attendance will be collected if kids are working from home. So we will have 27 special education students, 26 English language learners. Teachers are going to receive the $2,000 increase. That is part of the three-year plan that Governor D.C. gave to teachers. It was 20% over three years, and so this will be the last year of that. And we do expect to have about $145,000 in college tuition. And that costs us about $45,000 in college textbooks as well as regular high school supplies. Does anybody have any questions?
Board members, just indicate then your question, and then we'll move on to the next person. Questions, board members?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
This is Dana. I just want to take personal time to thank Lisa for her efforts in bringing this charter school into one of the best in the country, along with our other charter school as well. We're going to miss her. So good luck to you, Lisa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sarr. It really has been an honor to work with all of you and the great kids we have. And I know that the support we've gotten from the board, from Dr. Gonzalez and now Dr. Wise, is really... It's just Gateway's the best place I've ever worked, so I appreciate that very much.
Any other comments or questions, board members? I'm not calling on you this time, so speak up if you'd like to offer any comment. I don't see anyone on muting here, so I'm going to presume that there are no questions, Principal Smith. And I want to echo Dana's comments and congratulate you on your career with the district and certainly in leading this charter school to be best in class. With that, then, there being no further questions, and we've heard the information, is there a motion to consider approval of the proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School?
This is Dana. I make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Nguyen is at the second. We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School student. Any discussion? All those in favor, I'm going to call again. Roll call vote. Ms. Maya? Mr. Hendrix?
Aye.
Mrs. McGrath?
Aye.
Dr. Norene?
Aye.
Mr. Sarr?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Ms. Nguyen?
Aye.
I vote aye. Ms. Maya, I see that you're on, but... With...
I said it.
Thank you. With that, the motion carries with a vote of 7-0 in favor. Congratulations and best wishes to you again, Principal Smith.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So now moving to the Phoenix College Prep Academy proposed budget. Dr. Gonzalez?
President Sullivan, members of the board, I would like to recognize and ask Dr. Larry Johnson, president of Phoenix College, to speak and introduce his high school principal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests, and Larry Johnson, the president of Phoenix College. I would like to take this opportunity to present the dynamic principal of the Phoenix College Preparatory Academy, Principal Keith Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, President Sullivan, Chancellor Gonzalez, board members, CEC members and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to present our budget for Phoenix College Preparatory Academy for the year 2021. Much of what I share will be very similar to, obviously, what Lisa just shared for Gateway. If we can move slides. Our enrollment that we're expecting this year at 2:30 up from 2:15 last year. We are trying to continue to get some facilities because we've turned away some kids, and we'd like to, you know, continue to have that upward trend. Our state-based funding is up a little bit, a couple hundred, $150,000 or so, based on the enrollment increase. Our small school cut is also up to 114,000. Additional assistance per student is up to 2185. And then our additional assistance small school cut is down a little bit. And as Lisa said, our Prop 301 is down this year. And there was a little bit of a mistake on last year's 301 calculation, but we expect that to go down next year as well. Next slide. So our state-based funding is up to 1,382,639. Our additional assistance is up to 502,672. Our Prop 123 is the same at 10 grand. State equalization, you know, up to 1,895,311. And our Prop 301 is up about $6,000 to 147,211. Instructional improvement up to $9,000 this year from 3,500. We did get results-based funding again this year. We've got it. I can't remember if it's two years or three years in a row, but we did get $85,000, almost $86,000 for, I guess, it ended up being our state test scores and some other things, being a Title I school. Takes our total state funding up to 2,137,458. All of our federal funds are down a little bit. I asked Steve Hart why that is, and he said it's just the calculation. So we're down 106,500 for a total budget revenue of 2243,958. As I said, we had 215 students this year, but we're projecting 230. We actually have about 250 enrolled right now, but with attrition and plus not knowing what's going on with the pandemic, we wanted to budget on 230. We do have the ability to go up to 300. We are fully staffed and added an English teacher and a math teacher. As Lisa said, we also, all of our teachers received another $2,000 increase. For the, this is the third year of the Red for Ed money. The budget includes $180,000 for college tuition and $70,000 for books. And we have 12 special education students and 12 English language learners. And 89% of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, or free lunch. Any questions?
Board members, again, open opportunity. I recognize that most of us are on mute, and it does take a minute to disconnect a little bit or unmute. But in the meantime, are there any questions for Mr. Brown?
I have a comment. This is Mrs. Nguyen.
Mrs. Nguyen?
I just want to say that both of these charter schools are exceptional. And the fact that they have increased numbers and they continue to deliver, and they are exceptional schools, really is one of the shining stars of Maricopa Community College. And it shows that we're doing a lot of great things, but both leaders of both of these charter schools have represented us well. And I think that they deserve all of our accolades and appreciation for the job they're doing with these young people. Really wonderful to see. So that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Being none, and after hearing this presentation, is there a motion to approve the proposed budget for Phoenix College Prep Academy for just the year 2021?
Dana, second?
So it moved by Ms. Nguyen, seconded by Mr. Sarr. Any discussion on the motion? Being none, I'll call roll again for the vote. Ms. Maya?
Aye.
Mr. Hendrix?
Aye.
Mrs. McGrath?
Aye.
Dr. Norene?
Aye.
Mr. Sarr?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Ms. Nguyen?
Aye.
I vote aye. The motion carries on a 7-0. I'd also like to add my congratulations and appreciation to those of you leading these exceptional charter schools. We appreciate your efforts and outcomes and recognize that you're headed for a good year next year based on that. So thank you again, and may you have a good summer, if that's on the horizon for you. With that, then, I'm going to pass this on to the next item on the agenda. And again, this one, I expect, will also garner some discussion. We are here today to reach a potential outcome with action. But I certainly do not want to curtail any discussion. What will be helpful is, as I see you on mute, I'll do my best. I'll recognize that you may want to speak, but I will go again and call on folks for that. I've been asked how I make the choices. Well, usually it's alphabetical order, one direction or another. Or I look at the attendance sheet and just call in order of that. Please, when you speak, identify yourself so that we have record of that, particularly for the live chat. And with that, then, moving on to tuition models, Dr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board. So we've had two work sessions where we've talked about potential budget, or excuse me, tuition reduction models. And we'd like to think that we've taken the collective interest expressed over those two meetings and have put those into a total package that can be considered for adoption today. In part of this request was also a question about where we were with expenditure limitation as it relates to enrollment and any change to tuition. And so the second half of this presentation will be led by either Dr. Jim Moore or Gary Aquinto. And we will start off with Dr. Fisher, Provost of the Maricopa System, to kick off the tuition reduction and promotions model presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you start, Dr. Fisher, I do want to ask if we could, as we go through the presentation, move from one to the expenditure limit. Certainly, that was raised as a point of concern by Mrs. McGrath last time. And rather than pausing, I think it's part of the bigger discussion for the tuition reduction conversation. So if we can go from one to the other presentations, board members, please be writing down your questions or however your memory works. And when I do call on you, then, we can have a robust discussion from there. So with that, again, thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and excuse me for interrupting, Dr. Fisher. But the last thing I want to say is I know that you've worked very hard to make sure that you collected pertinent information and data based on our last conversation, and you had a limited time to do that. So thank you for meeting our interests today. With that, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. I would be very remiss if I didn't say it takes a village to build a PowerPoint. And there were individuals across the district that contributed to the data that you were looking for from our meeting last week. And so a special thank you to all of them. Two of them will be joining us later in this presentation. That would be Ms. Darcy Renfro, who's our Chief Workforce and Economic Development Officer, and Dr. Maria Weiss, who is serving as our interim president at Gateway Community College. And they'll be stepping in to talk about workforce opportunities and clock hour opportunities, respectively. Next slide. You'll recall from our special session last week, your special session last week, we had brought forward some tuition reduction models. There was a very robust conversation and other ideas and opportunities brought to the table. These are the opportunities that went away with. So we'll be talking today about a fall 2020, 25% reduction in per credit hour tuition for all students. Again, that's the same model that was presented last week. That's after grants are applied. Then, spring 2021, 25% reduction in per credit hour for continuing students. So that would be those who completed at least three credits in fall 2020 and re-enrolled. A flat rate full-time at 12 hours at a regular tuition rate. An opportunity for specific workforce, that would be high-demand, low-enrolled credit programs. An opportunity for clock-hour program students. An opportunity for out-of-state students. Institutional funding for additional student scholarship grants. And promotion marketing around these options, because of course, unless we talk about them, students won't know what we're doing for them. Next slide. We had a discussion rather towards the end of last special session about the variety of goals that we could be trying to address with these options. Things that were brought out to the table were to address our enrollment declines, to provide additional financial support specifically for students impacted by COVID-19 and pandemic response, to provide financial support for all of our students, knowing that this is a tough time, and of course, to support our community during a difficult economic time. We did not attempt to tie individual options to those goals, but I put them in front of you because I think if we can keep all of those in mind, next slide, along with our guiding principles for implementation, that may help as we look at the variety of options on the table. So again, implementation guiding principles, these are the same ones that we shared with you last week, and they are driving our work. So focus on student equity specifically to help students in ways that make sense for them, knowing that their individual situations may vary dramatically. We want to foster continued academic momentum for students toward degree completion, program completion. We want to encourage increased FAFSA completion so that students can take advantage of financial aid that particularly Pell Grants that are available to them. We want to protect financial aid availability and, of course, students' eligibility and status for things like veterans' benefits. We want to maximize savings for students while continuing to support our institutional budget. We want to maintain our brand equity as a high-quality option with added support in this challenging time rather than changing our brand to simply focus on the cost of education. Next slide. And to that end, we wanted to bring you some very current data. We just ran this text survey. It's called an SMS survey over the weekend. And you can see here, it was messaged out to 35,721 students, those that had been enrolled in the spring but are not enrolled for fall. It's a relatively short survey to ascertain why students have not gone ahead and enrolled for fall. And we received 2240 responses in just three days. Now, that actually sounds like a very small amount of students, but according to statisticians, it is a statistically significant sample size. For a population of 100,000 students, they really would only look for about 1,100 with a 3% margin of error. So of course, when you think about 35,000 students roughly getting 2,200 responses, that's well within the significance that we'd be looking for. And the reason that's important is that allows us to then infer from that data to the larger population. Now, I think it's always important, and I say this to staff, when we think about using survey data, we have to understand that it is not a laser pointer. It is a flashlight. It begins to show us the way, but it's not, we're not going to be able to answer every granular question with one single survey. That said, I think the data are fascinating. Next slide. So we know that students are waiting to enroll. Now, the survey was done with a decision tree, which means you're asked a question, and that then prompts the next questions based on your previous answer. So we asked students to tell us a little more about their current situation as a result of COVID-19 or other concerns they may have about taking fall classes. And their choices were that they have concerns due to COVID-19. About 56% said that that was the case. Others, about 20% said they had other kinds of concerns. And then about 23% said they did not have concerns about taking courses for fall. And those that were not concerned told us that they were ready to re-enroll, and you can see that's in graph one. So that vast majority. But the follow-up question to that is, are you interested in us contacting you? And we were surprised to see how many students really want that personal attention. And so we've got some plans to follow up with all of the students that responded that way to this survey. Next slide. For our conversation today, this is where the data gets particularly interesting. About 15% that said they have not enrolled due to COVID-19 said that cost was a factor in that attendance. Much greater, however, were changes or impacts to their lives due to COVID-19 or communication to students, our communication to them around our plans and modalities. We have upcoming communications getting primed right now in response to this, and so we'll be able to address some of those concerns. Next slide. For those students that told us they have not enrolled due to other reasons not related to COVID-19, slightly less, 14% indicated that cost of attendance... slightly less, 14% indicated that cost of attendance was a factor in that. Again, in both of these cases, they were able to select more than one response. And so that's why you see the varying numbers on the chart. But very, very clearly, for those that are not enrolling due to other reasons, they are looking for more support from our institution to help them get there. Next slide. Now, we're going to move into the options that were, were pre-staged at the beginning of the presentation. The first would be the 25% tuition reduction for 20 and 20, 2021. So that's the fall of 2020 and the spring of 2021. You can see that that would take the cost to 63.75 per credit hour, down 25%. Again, these discounts, just as we discussed last week, only apply to Arizona resident students. And about 94% of our students are Arizona residents. Okay, moving to the next slide. One that we also discussed last week was flat rate full-time. However, that was with the reduction in tuition. What we're suggesting today, having looked at the data, is that flat rate full-time makes a lot of sense to encourage full-time attendance for academic momentum and completion. In this case, students would pay no more than $1,020 for 12 or more hours. And you can see there what that rate looks like when you break it out. So in 15 credit hours, that takes their tuition rate down to $68 a credit hour. At 18 hours, it takes it down to 56.6 per credit hour. Now, we know that most students cannot handle more than about 18 or 19 credit hours at a time in a semester. However, more gifted students are able to, to apply to take more than 19 credit hours. And anything over 12 would still be at that same rate. Next slide. And here is where I'd like to invite Ms. Darcy Renfro to step into the conversation and talk to us about workforce opportunities.
So, good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board. I'm Darcy Renfro, the Chief Workforce and Economic Development Officer for Maricopa Community Colleges District. I am going to talk through a little bit of this data quickly and give you a sense of what we, what you're looking at here and why these programs were chosen. We took a combination of data points to determine what in, in areas of growth, even in this COVID, post-COVID market, are occupational areas that are still opportunity areas. And then looked across at some of the capacity for the courses and programs that align to those occupational areas. The, there isn't, in all cases, a direct match between a program and an occupation as it's reported through Department of Labor and other resources. But there are some that are a direct match, like phlebotomy. A phlebotomy is a phlebotomy in an occupational code, and a phlebotomy is a program within Maricopa. So we took a range of programs, looking at growth and also looking at things like the average wage, looking, wanting to focus on not just high demand, high-growth occupational areas, but those that pay at least $15 an hour as a wage threshold for what we would classify as a, as a good-paying job. And took a look at the growth, the completion patterns within Maricopa, which is the first column, first is the name of the program in the first column, program description. And you can see there's a wide variety. We intentionally wanted to reach a number of different kinds of programs within sectors that we have been focused on for the last couple of years. And then took a look at the program growth, completion growth within Maricopa as a proxy for market interest. So as your, as the students are started choosing their paths and their programs, where they're choosing them based on opportunities that are in the market. And so we looked at that as well as looked at the market growth. We identified in the second column, so you can see some programs are growing at much faster rates with our students and, than other programs. And there are reasons for some of those. I did want to point out in some of the program areas that there is, where there's an asterisk, we did not include clock-hour programs. These are, for example, phlebotomy. Phoenix College has the only non-clock-hour phlebotomy program, but there is a clock-hour phlebotomy program at Gateway. And that program has already expanded into a different location in the valley as a clock-hour program. So there are some limits to a couple of these categories. The other limit is, in particularly in the construction spaces, that we were not able to, we did not include upcoming programs, like the programs that will be launched at South Mountain in construction, for example. They haven't started yet, so we have no historical data to look at in terms, but we, in terms of where, where we are as a, as a district in programs. But we do know there is continued to be growth in that space and need. We identified, secondly, the number of programs within Maricopa, median salary, and then the job growth. In, in six months ago, these job growth numbers in some spaces could have been as high as 15 to 20%. So these numbers, really anything above a 2 is considered exceptional at this moment. But all of these have growth patterns. So year after year, they continue to increase the number of job openings that are posted. And that is part of the calculations that we look at in terms of what, what occupations are growing and what the market is looking for, what employers are looking for. The, the second, the next column, demand in Maricopa County. What that, in addition to the percentage growth year after year, we wanted to look at how does, how is growth in Maricopa County compared to the rest of, to other counties across the country? And so we identified then, those programs that are very high in Maricopa, that are growing faster here than they are generally other places. And then obviously, the colleges are the next, which colleges offer those programs? We're looking at that a bit as a proxy for capacity. We looked at a lot of different issues around capacity, so low enrollment. So the, the, the objective was to get high-demand, low-enrollment programs. And we had some enrollment data, but with, it was, it's not a pure measure and not an accurate measure of being able to determine how much capacity there is within a particular program to expand on it. We could get to that, that number through additional conversations with individual colleges. Because of the multiple factors that go into capacity and program, course-taking patterns of students, everything from how many credit hours do they take, and then on an average basis, how long it takes them to complete their program. It was difficult to, to nail down what I would believe would be a, a very honest and defensible data point. But it is not impossible, just requires more time. I will say that, however, with the exception of phlebotomy and respiratory care, we believe there is capacity within the system to grow these programs and get more students enrolled. And each college may have a slightly different capacity for growth. And it would also depend on the number of courses that are within that program and how those are, are placed throughout the college. So respiratory care therapists, we know is a high-growing field, and we have one program. It's a cohort program at Gateway, and it's limited in the, the number of students that can be in that program. We also know there's a five-year, or last I checked, five-year waiting list for rest to get into that program. So there's demand. And the ability to determine what would it cost us to, or what would it cost Gateway to expand that program is again, dependent on several things. Equipment is expensive, schedule, I mean, their, their faculty, et cetera. So there is a way to calculate that, but we just weren't able to unfortunately get that into this presentation for this time. The final column is the median cost to students. It's the average between a CCL and an AAS. And some of these areas, they offer, there are both a, a certificate available as well, and a sort of associate degree option available for the student. So we took the average of those two, where there were, if they had both, we took the average cost to the student and incorporate that, incorporated that information in here so you could see sort of generally on a per-student basis, what generally would each of these programs cost. The only other thing I would say about this list is, this is a list that is familiar to, to us. And we had been working up through the end of last calendar year at identifying growth areas where we could focus on, as a system, on, on possible expansion and targeted, targeted investments to meet the demands of the market. So what, if we were to pick a set of programs within these industries, these priority industries, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, business, construction, education, and IT, what would be, where would we get the best, what is our best opportunity? And so these programs have been talked about in that context as well. And as we moved into post-COVID, the growth patterns for these programs have held up. And so they, they continue to stay at the forefront here. I think that is it, Dr. Fisher.
Thank you very much. Next slide. Moving from workforce, we're going to talk about our clock-hour programs. I'm going to invite Dr. Maria Weiss into the conversation.
Thank you, Provost Fisher, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor. Thank you for the opportunity to present a potential tuition reduction model for the clock-hour students. We felt it was important to provide some information that needed to be considered in developing a model for clock-hour students because there are some significant differences in how we calculate the tuition, the cost of attendance, and students are billed. So first, our tuition is $5 an hour. Our programs will vary between 120 to 1,600 hours. Those programs that are 600 and above are financial aid eligible. We build students in what we call blocks. And the blocks are really a collection of courses that are delivered over a time period of about three months. Most of our programs consisted, consist of two blocks. So for example, a program that would be 600 hours would be broken up to about 300, two blocks, 300 hours each. Students typically attend their courses or seat time is about 24 hours a week. And so each of these blocks would consist of about three months of a period of time. Our program starts very over the calendar year. They do not necessarily align with semesters. The slide indicates that there are five start times in calendar year. That's not necessarily accurate. There's actually more start times than that, but we're shooting to limit them to get it to be a little more consistent. So some of these challenges make it difficult, made it difficult for us to look at a model. We tried to mirror as much as possible what is being done on the credit side. So looking at a percentage that we would decrease their tuition and retention, looking at a cap. The way we offer the clock-hour programs, the cap tuition didn't seem to work very well because of the varying number of hours of our program. If you can go to the next slide, please. What we are proposing is to consider a 20% decrease in the five-hour, $5 per hour rate. And there's two groups that we would need to look at in this situation. Currently have a number of students who are enrolled in programs that are in suspension. We are, we have a plan for those to come back. These are courses that we're, we're running in the spring term semester. Starting June 15th next week, as you're already aware, we'll be bringing back those programs to complete. Some of those will be able to complete in their entirety because their program was scheduled to end through that last portion. Others will continue on to another block. And so we are proposing that students who have additional blocks in programs they're currently enrolled in, be billed at a $4 per hour rate for the remainder of their blocks. The second group of students would be students who are enrolling in a program that is scheduled to start between July 1 of 2020 and April 30 of 2021. Again, trying to align with the credit models of addressing retention for students who are enrolled in the fall and would like to continue into the spring. We are proposing that their entire program be billed all for dollar-per-hour rate, which is a 20% decrease. The cost of that proposal would be $433,355. Thank you for the opportunity to present the model.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. Next slide, please. We've been talking for some time about opportunities for out-of-state students. Back in 2011, a policy that allowed out-of-state students to take up to six credit hours at in-state tuition was taken off the books. That had to do primarily with legal presence issues that were happening about that time. As Dr. Noreeney has pointed out, other institutions within the state have brought that back. And so this shows you the headcount data for our students that are out of state, that are taking, as you see across the top, one to three credit hours, four to six credit hours, seven to nine, and on up to 16 plus. So the, we actually have more students taking more than six credit hours. So 3,209 out-of-state students currently, well, in the fall of 2019. And we had 2,158 students taking six or fewer credit hours in the fall of 19. The cost to, to Maricopa, to go back to this policy, is variable by headcount, which makes sense, I'm sure. It's $241 per credit hour that we would no longer collect if we took the one through six credit hour students down to in-state tuition. The other risk in doing that, of course, is that we incentivize those taking seven-plus credit hours to reduce their tuition, or reduce their credit hours to get the in-state tuition just on the six credit hours. A way to manage that, of course, is to allow them to have their first six at in-state and then any added at out-of-state. But again, it seems rather disincentivizing for them to take more than six hours. But the data is here before you for discussion. Next slide. The other and the last of the tuition pieces that we wanted to talk about today were additional student scholarship grants. Again, this is the last dollar model. So these would be need-based scholarship grants that are good for tuition fees and books. We would be using the Pell eligibility criteria that we use in our financial aid processes. This would not require an additional business process. So it would be easy, relatively easy to slip additional dollars into the system and get those meted out to students. The good thing about using Pell eligibility criteria is that it individualizes each award based on students' needs and resources. And as I said, it uses our existing processes. The requirements, however, are that you have to have a FAFSA completed, and you have to be here with lawful presence proven. Now, the cost to Maricopa, if we wanted to do last-dollar grants for Pell-eligible students, for every million dollars, we could serve 2,500 students. If we wanted to serve non-Pell-eligible students with grants of approximately the same size, an average of $400, we could serve, again, 2,500 students for a million dollars. And just for context, not for recommendation, would be serving 327 full-ride grant for non-Pell-eligible students for the same $1 million. In other words, we can get far, far further if we use Pell eligibility and, and serve so many more students. Now, when we think about our student base, about 14% of our students are FAFSA filers that are not Pell-eligible based on their estimated family contribution. And so according to Pell rules, they do not have a defined need for grant funding. However, if we chose to use an equal grant amount for them, they would be eligible for the $400. Another 6% receives some Pell grant funding but have that remaining need. So they, they would receive the 400. receive the 400. About 74% are within the estimated family contribution to fully cover their tuition and estimated but costs with Pell funding. So really, when we're talking about these additional scholarship grants, we're talking about approximately 20% of our students would be receiving those grant dollars based on Pell eligibility. Now let's move into the marketing campaign. Next slide, please. We would like to request that if we're going to spend some dollars on promotion, we want to spend some dollars on promoting the promotions around tuition. So for an eight-week, a very intense messaging from June 22nd to August 8th, that would be to impact our fall enrollment. We'd ask for a budget of $500,000. And you can see how that would be broken out with digital, digital display ads, paid social media, and production and fees to cover what needs to be produced in a very timely fashion to get out to our audiences. Key messages based on the very recent poll would be learn safe in fall 2020. We need to make sure that everyone understands that we are open this fall and that we are here to serve them. We have classes in multiple modalities, including live, online, and that we're addressing all their concerns about how things are going to work for them in the fall. Live online is new terminology for Maricopa. It is a process by which classes are scheduled in sessions that meet online at specific days and times. And the attendance in these sessions are at the direction of the instructor. An additional work is required on the student's own time outside those classes, but it does allow them to have good interaction with the students in their class as they would, or at least as close to as they would in a live class. So it's a live online class. It does, of course, just like an online class, require access to a computer or a mobile device with an internet connection. And just as we talked about, next slide, last meeting. Here are the kinds of promotional channels that we're using at this time. We typically invest in a significant amount of what we call outdoor, which is, of course, billboards, bus stands, wrapping trains. We've done some of that this time, but we've pulled back and we want to invest as heavily as we can in ways to get actually into folks' homes where they are at the moment. So that's what we'd like to do around marketing. Next slide. And finally, this is just a wrap-up of each of the eight that we've been talking about today. Of course, the opportunity for workforce, which is right there in the middle, is still TBD. There's work to be done there, if that's the direction of the board. But the others, you can see, with the exception of out of state students, you can see about how much each of those will cost. Now, these are budget impact projections, so using the best of our knowledge in past data. The one that's an actual past data is around flat rate full-time. And that is, again, is one semester for the 3.6 million, and that is fall 2019 data. I understand, Ms. Sullivan, that we should continue on. So if we can, let's go to the next, go past the next two slides, the discussion and the title slide. And I will invite Mr. Gary Yacinto to come to talk to us about expenditure limitation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, CEC, and guests. I'm Gary Yacinto. I am the chief financial officer for the district. I'll try to pick up the tempo a little bit through this segment of the presentation so that there's plenty of time for questions and discussion. This part of the presentation really has three parts. The first, I'd like to walk through a few definitions related to the expenditure limit. It's a bit of a tutorial, but I think it's important to provide a base understanding of the terminology. And the second part is to honor requests from a board member to provide an expenditure limit per full-time student equivalent metric. And I'd like to caution everybody, I'll probably use shorthand for full-time student equivalent through this presentation and call it FTSE to save on the words. And then finally, we have an examination of the expenditure limit under three scenarios with varying assumptions for tuition discounts in enrollment. So moving on to the definition slide, the first of two slides, we begin with expenditure limit. And the expenditure limit was created by a constitutional referendum that was approved by the voters in 1980. And it is intended to limit how much an entity, including community colleges, can grow. The expenditure limit calculation uses two variables. It uses full-time student equivalent, FTSE, and inflation. And the formula is that there, the formula is that expenditure limitation moves with changes in FTSE since 1980, 1980 is the base, times increase in inflation since 1980. Full-time student equivalent, FTSE, is we can use, we're provided an opportunity to use one of three measures for calculating FTSE. That's provided to us by the economics, the Economic Estimates Commission, which is established by a government. And the other thing to note about FTSE is that FTSE is lagged by two years, given for its impact on the expenditure limit. So for example, the fiscal year 2021 expenditure limit is based on fiscal year 19 estimated FTSE. The inflation variable is a measure of the United States GM price deflator. Next slide, please. And then finally, and this is an important definition, it is the expenditure limit capacity. And the capacity is generated when expenditures that are subject to the limit are below the established expenditure limit itself. And these leftover expenditure dollars or capacity can be accumulated and carried forward to future years to ensure that we do not expend or go beyond the expenditure limit. In years where current year expenditures exceed the current year expenditure limitation, the capacity is used to reduce expenditures below the limit, and that capacity is then reduced. So conversely, when expenditures are below the limit, again, the leftover capacity can be accumulated and used in future years. The final point I'd like to make about the expenditure limit capacity is that it is established separately for each of our funds. And in this presentation, we're only looking at the capacity for the general fund. Next slide, please. And this slide was created, again, to honor the request by board member McGrath to develop a metric. And that metric she had asked for was, you know, what is the expenditure limitation per FTSE? And using the FY '21 expenditure limit, using the FY '19 FTSE count, remember the two-year lag, that metric amounts to $6,075 per full-time student equivalent. So we can say generally that expenditures above the $6,075 will mean that our expenditure capacity, our expenditure limit capacity is reduced more quickly. And then, again, conversely, generally expenditures below that metric will mean that capacity is reduced more slowly. Again, this is a simplistic view. There are many more components that go into determining that capacity, but at least this is a general guide. Next slide, please. Okay, so the first of our scenarios assumes that there's no change in tuition and that our student count, FTSE, is flat. This is our base case so that we can examine changes in tuition and FTSE against it. Looking at the chart, just kind of going down through the rows, the first line of the table shows the expenditure limit. And again, this is established by the economics, the Economic Estimates Commission. The limits for FY '20 and '21 have been provided to us by the EEC. For FY '22 and FY '23, we estimated the limit using only the change in inflation. So we, again, we assumed that our student count was flat. Again, FTSE is the second variable. And you'll see in the third and final scenario, as we change the FTSE in combination with a student discount, which is in our second scenario, it has a rather dramatic effect on the capacity. But moving down scenario one, the expenditures subject to the expenditure limit, we have remained constant throughout that projection period. And then the amount over or under the capacity provides how much that capacity is being utilized. And then the final line shows the final capacity available in the event that our expenditures exceed the expenditure limitation. That capacity can be drawn upon so that we do not exceed expenditure limit. Next slide, please. So scenario two, we kept the student count flat and we applied a tuition discount of 25%. And so you can see that what happens, if you go down to the last line, our capacity shrinks. And it goes from an estimated $144.9 million in FY '20 down to 80.2 million in FY '23. And it is because in FY '21, we have, we have applied the 25% discount. The effect of the 25% discount is to reduce our revenue from tuition, which falls outside of spending limit, the expenditure limit. And therefore, you can see the effect, the expenditure subject to limit in FY '21 has increased to 527.7 million, which reflects, again, the reduction in our tuition revenue. Next slide, please. So our final scenario includes both a tuition discount of 25% and a decline in our student count by 25%. So the expenditure limit is, the expenditure limit is reduced dramatically in FY '23 because the 25% reduction in the, again, two-year lagged fiscal year '21 student count. And that 25% reduction in that student count has a rather significant decrease in our expenditure limit. And therefore, if, working through the chart, we use up additional capacity and our ending capacity by FY '23, it's shown in the chart as a negative 91.4 million, but obviously we cannot go below zero. So there would be no, we would fully and totally exhaust our expenditure limit capacity under this scenario by fiscal year '23. This may be an outlier in that we may not actually realize a full 25% decline in student count in fiscal year '21. But nevertheless, it gives us some sense of the direction and the magnitude that tuition discounts and student count declines have on our expenditure limit and our expenditure limit capacity. So with that, that concludes my part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yacinto, and thank you, Dr. Fisher, for your presentation. Before I open this up for discussion and questions, Dr. Gonzalez, is there an enrollment update? You know how anxious we are on a weekly basis.
Yes, as, thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board. Captured as of this past Friday evening, which is when we capture the current enrollment week, fall headcount is down 23.7% and basic FTSE is down 26%. So we've seen some improvement from the previous week, albeit small in FTSE, a little bit bigger, a little bit greater improvement in the fall headcount. And of course, we're approximately two months away from the start of the fall semester. So we're hoping that with what comes out of today's meeting may help us quickly begin to address these current data. Thank you.
Thank you. May I step aside here? I know, Ms. Nguyen, you have to sign off, perhaps. Do you have any comments or questions as we move forward?
No, I appreciate the information. I appreciate the depth that I'm going to try to join the call from the car. And I, you know, I'm hoping that the, as things are opening up, that we're going to see enrollment. I think we're starting to see a trend towards that, that people are now starting to think about the fall. I hope that we're part of that plan for our community. I think we're a good solution. I like the work that Darcy and Mrs. Renfro and Provost Fisher did. I think that that's given us a good picture as to what's coming. I think until people start enrolling, we haven't been here before. So we don't know what to expect. And I think that's the, that's what we've got to figure out, is are people going to come back to college? And I think right now, the answer is yes, but we, they just haven't taken the steps to do that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, Mrs. Nguyen will be stepping off for a short while here and possibly rejoining us. But with that, then, let's move on. So I'm going to go in reverse alphabetical order since I spoke with Mrs. Nguyen. So that leads me to you, Dr. Thor. Comments and questions?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. And thanks so much to the staff for really, really helpful information. Also, a thank you to Mrs. McGrath for requesting the presentation on the expenditure limitation, which I found very enlightening. I have quite a lot of comments, actually. One, the survey that was done, what students who were enrolled in the spring and have not yet enrolled in the fall, is, as Dr. Fisher said, fascinating and very enlightening. So clearly, 91% of the students indicated their intention to enroll in the fall. And that is consistent with what we've been reading in the national publications. And in fact, just today, Eduventures had a report that recommended that community colleges be preparing for a 20% increase in enrollment because of what they expect to be a trend of students not returning to the universities and choosing to stay in their homes. Also, very important is the fact that the students could have chosen all of the reasons that were presented to them, yet only 15% of the students chose, the COVID-19 impacted students chose that they couldn't afford. And only 14% of the non-COVID-19 indicated that they couldn't, that they couldn't afford to go. So in my mind, that tells me that we do not need an across-the-board tuition reduction. But rather, what we need is to enhance our but rather what we need is to enhance our scholarships or grant opportunities to take care of those students who are indicating that the barrier is that they can't afford. I appreciated the presentation on the workforce opportunities, but clearly, until we have information about how much it will cost to expand some or all of those programs, I don't think we could do anything but say, keep working on this and come back. On the out-of-state students, it's my recollection, having been in the system from 1990 to 2010, is that the policy was that all out-of-state students got the first six credits at the in-state rate and then only paid the additional amount for seven and above. So I don't think that Dr. Fisher's concerned that this is going to encourage students who currently take more than seven to only take up to six. I would, I don't know whether we know how much it, so Dr. Fisher indicated that 20% of our students would be getting the institutional grants. So if we know how much that translates to in terms of dollars, I would appreciate that. So then on the expenditure limitation, I think even if our enrollment stays flat, that it's not responsible of us to take such a dramatic hit on our capacity by having the across-the-board tuition cuts. So I think that's my comments for now.
Dr. Thor, do you have a comment on flat rate and clock hour? You seem to have covered all the others.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. So the flat rate, I continue to, you know, COVID-19 aside, enrollment issues aside, think that is a very wise policy because students who are taking 12 credit hours cannot graduate in two years. If we can encourage them to take the 15 credit hours a semester, they would be able to graduate in two years. So that's just good policy for us in terms of our commitment to student completion and student success. I would feel the same way about an across-the-board cut to clock-hour students as I do on across-the-board cut for tuition. However, I would like to see us include clock-hour students in the ability to get institutional aid or grants.
And last, marketing. Sorry, wanting to make sure.
Thank you, thank you. And clearly, the expenditure on marketing is necessary, given the result of the survey, because the survey is indicating that students are unclear about what we're doing and they're waiting for more direction from us. So that cries out for a good marketing campaign.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. I know this is awkward for no questions back to you, but, so I'm going to keep moving. Mr. Sarr?
Well, I'm glad Dr. Thor went first because everything she said, I concur with.
Well, there you go.
This is very complicated and I really appreciate.
Wait, wait, wait. I hope we got that recorded. Now I'll mute myself.
Thank you, Dana. I'm sorry, you were at complicated.
Yeah, it is complicated in all those aspects, from advertising and marketing through clock hour. I think there's a lot of unknowns in this. We've never been in this position before, as Mrs. Nguyen said. And the investment we're talking about in reduced tuition, tuition, have a corresponding return on investment that we're comfortable with because we've never been in this position. I, again, going back to what Dr. Thor said, she makes good points. I don't know if they're the right solutions or not. We won't know for a year or two. When we get beyond this, I think it's interesting to add to what Dr. Thor said, the survey that a lot, the biggest percentage of students who finished out the spring semester do plan to come back to us in the fall, whether that's with the same amount of credits or less or more, we don't know. So whether our reduced, and the cap will encourage those spring students to take more credits in the fall, again, we don't know. It's a crapshoot at this point. You know, should we just do nothing? Should we do things the way we are? I think that's an option for us. But I also know that that survey that well put together was only talking about students we already had. We don't know is those, how are we going to get to those students who are not part of our existing enrollment? We know that we have the largest growth in population in the country here in Maricopa County, one of many ways. And we also know that we have the highest growth rate of opportunity youth as well. So we're not getting a lot of those students that really could benefit from what we provide in terms of skills and education. With that being said, I have to say, I'm lost in terms of what I would be specific about, but I do think we determine whether we're going to do something or whether we're going to just leave things the way they are and see where the chips fall down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment about those who are enrolled or were enrolled or were part of the survey. But I do have a question. I received a robo-call survey that actually asked me that question. It was rare, A, that I answered a landline, and B, that I would answer a survey, but I happened to do both. And it turned out to be an inquiry about my position on community college and money. I don't know, it was very peculiar. But Dr. Gonzalez, have we done a survey to those who are not current students?
President Sullivan, members of the board, that's a great question. I would say, I would say towards the, I would say towards the middle to the end of last month, we did do a strategic survey. Matt Hassan was helpful in that so that we could begin a strategic campaign around the value of community college during this pandemic. And it sounds like perhaps Carla wanted to weigh in, or Dr. Fisher wanted to weigh in on that. But if Matt is on, I would ask him to also chime in on this for us.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, let's do you first and then Mr. Hassan.
Ms. Sullivan, Dr. Gonzalez, I was simply going to say that our communications team, our crack team, had done that survey. So if Mr. Matt Hassan is on the line.
Thank you. We're all reading each other's minds, apparently.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board. This is Matt Hassan, Chief Communications Officer for the district. We did conduct a survey and some focus groups of about 5,500 student age parents and adults with some college and no degree. That was about 5,500 participants in that survey. What we learned from that is there are a lot of factors that are going into people's determination, whether they're going to come back to school. And once we pulled out those that weren't, that cost wasn't a factor, many of them, you know, I think it was 82%, I don't have the, I wasn't ready to have this poll up, but 82% would be interested in going back to community or going to a community college. However, there were some qualitative factors that they had to consider, and some of those are unemployment, loss of jobs, needing to recover from the financial strain of the past three, four months. But we also saw that we only received about 22% would be interested, excuse me, 27% would be interested in a tuition reduction, and 36% did not have any concerns whatsoever about the financial aspect of it. It was more that qualitative personal circumstances that were impacting their decision to go to college.
Thank you. And it might be helpful if we, if that could be packaged for us to have some indicators of issues to address. I realize you're using it for your marketing, but it's still curious information. And then I understand, Dr. Fisher, you had a response to one of Dr. Thor's questions and before we wrap up with Mr. Sarr here.
Ms. Sullivan, thank you, Dr. Thor. You'd asked what it would cost to provide the additional scholarship grants in the amount of approximately $400 each to students within that 20% that have demonstrated need or are not covered entirely by Pell. And that figure per semester would be $13.3 million.
Thank you.
But Mr. Sarr, do you have comments on the 25%, which is where we got, or some of these other ideas that stand out for you? And I know you were particularly interested in clock-hour conversation. Do you have a point of view on that?
Well, just like I said, I'm glad we're including clock hour, first of all. But whether that is a dollar or 20% reduction is the same, I think we need to have in general is that, is a 20% or 25% reduction in tuition going to get the results that we're looking for if our main goal is to bring enrollment up? And I don't see where that might be the case, as Dr. Thor said. I need, I think we need to have doing nothing, one of the options after all this discussion.
Okay, noted. So then, moving, Dr. Norene.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank Dr. Fisher and her village for putting all this stuff together. This was, this is great. I think it's going to be really helpful in our, in our decision. And thank Dr. Thor for going first because makes everybody else's job a lot easier because I agree with everything she said, too. And I think what, what it also gets to is, Mrs. Nguyen was saying that, yeah, I agree that, you know, we haven't been here before when it comes to the COVID-19, but we have been here before when it comes to enrolling students. And when we look at, at the survey of I have not enrolled due to other reasons not related to COVID, we see that what students are needing are that hand. We need, we need to provide that support for the students to, to speak with the advisor, to understand, to get that financial aid filled out, to understand what the next steps are. I mean, I work with this every day and it's a complicated process. And for students who don't have the support that they need, it's easy to throw up their hands and give up. So I think this is an opportunity to look at, at that and just look at how we're, how we're supporting our students just in general. I like the, you know, the, one of the things that, that Mr. Sarr was suggesting, too, is with the, especially when it comes to the out-of-state students, we're not considering those students who haven't been enrolled. I think that that would be, I think for those students, if we ask if cost was a factor, I think we would get a completely different answer from the out-of-state students who want to take three or six credits and how much that would cost, how much that would cost them. So I like the idea of six or less, and even if we have to, you know, just reduce the surcharge. And, you know, we don't have to eliminate it altogether, but we could reduce it to maybe 15, so it's $100 a credit hour. We might, we not consider, consider that. Yeah, the clock hours are going to be complicated. I like the idea of the flat, of the flat rate for 12 credits and above as well because, again, I know students' minds and that's, that's the way they think, is if I can get something for, you know, quote, nothing, I'm going to take advantage of it. And I understand that, you know, we know, we know it's 60 credits to get an associate degree. We know that half, half of 60 is 30. We know half of 30 is 15, and that's what we need each semester to graduate on time. The longer they, they stay in community college, the less money they may have going forward. So if we can get them, and I know that does something to, you know, for our ratings across the board, too, if we can get more students out in that reasonable time, that, that's helpful. So yeah, that's where I am. I agree with, with Dr. Thor and, yeah, I think we, there's a few of these things we need to consider and vote on. I don't know if we do it all at once or if we pick them apart one at a time and try to go forward with them. But yes, just one more thing with using the FAFSA and the financial aid as, as the scholarships is the last dollar in, I think is the most cost-effective way. Again, but when we go back to the marketing, that's something that we'll need to push and have FAFSA completion, FAFSA days, FAFSA afternoons, one-on-ones to complete the FAFSA. And then, one other thing I had was the professional discretion of the financial aid office. Because, again, when their students are filling out the FAFSA, we're using, we're using 2018 taxes. And I, there's obviously going to be a lot of extenuating circumstances going on. So making sure that the, that the financial aid office has more, the flexibility to utilize their professional discretion when they're awarding aid by considering extenuating circumstances and helping students understand how to, how to present their extenuating circumstances to the financial aid office so that they can be considered for additional funds. Because again, like I said, the 2020, 21 FAFSA is using the 2018 federal income tax to do that. So we have to make sure that they get that flexibility. And that's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Again, going alphabetically backwards, then, Mrs. McGrath. Mrs. McGrath, I don't know if I see you on mute here. While we're working through that, then I'll turn to, oh, you're there, Jean? Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, hello. Yes, now I can. Thank you very much. Do you have comments on the proposals?
Yes, I really liked what Dr. Thor had to say, and I tend to agree with her. I don't know that I want money spent on marketing specifically, as I want it spent on those students that said, I need to speak with an advisor, I'm waiting for classes to resume in person, enrollment, next steps, help. I'm wondering if maybe, I don't know, I call that marketing help, but I call it a student advisor, and I think we need to step up there and have more money spent there. And my biggest concern is everybody needs workforce training. And we have this chart of workforce opportunity, and if we can expand anything, I would like to expand these workforce classes. I think that we have a great need, and I think we'll have a great need going forward. And I'm not very interested, I'm not very interested in reducing tuition because apparently that's not a driving force. It's finding classes that help me get into the workforce. Thank you.
You're welcome. And did you receive the information you wanted on the expenditure limitations?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate their staff compiling that.
Perfect, okay. With that, then, Mr. Hendrix.
I think the comments that are made are great, and I'm, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, you're sure? I'm sure, I know you're sure. Sorry, that was facetious on my part. Thank you. Ms. Maya?
Hi, I, after looking at the presentation, I agree with what everyone else was saying. We have to push out those scholarships. We need more hands-on with the students. We need to, we need someone to guide them into how to enroll and follow those steps that they need. So I'm all for advertising the product. Also, we need to focus more on advisors. Maybe that's where we're lacking on and making sure that we, our advisors are trained enough that they know all the resources they are that they can offer to our students when they walk in those doors. There are various programs students can apply the moment they, they enroll into school. And those programs can help them pay for their college and for them to continue going to school.
Thank you. Any other comments from you then on that? Thank you, uh, any other comments from you then on that?
No, and th, and thank you for, for the presentation, that was a great presentation.
Um, so what I'd like to, to comment, I do also agree with the framework uh that you, has been presented by a Dr. Thor. I know we've spent a considerable amount of time talking about this and I want to also express my personal appreciation to all of you for tackling the twenty-five percent tuition discount and its intentions. Think we started at the right place and now we're ending up in a place that um I think we can all agree to move forward. What I'm hearing is uh pretty much agreement that we would abandon the twenty-five percent tuition reduction across the board for net fall and, or, and spring, that we'd like to reinforce uh and my position as well, scholarships and grants. Uh, it, to the point of the flat rate, I'm intrigued by that and think that could be a wonderful incentive. I'd also support the marketing promotion piece. I think that depending on how that happens, that also can uh in, answer a lot of the questions that people are waiting for. You know, what are we doing, when are we doing it, how are we going to go about things? So I think that can be accommodated that with some uh straightforward marketing. As far as coming back to the workforce piece, I think that's critically important. And I don't know that we can tackle that right now if we don't have all the dollar figures for expanding programs. But perhaps what we could do is create a general framework for, for how we want to move forward right now. And then ask you, Ms. Remfro and your team to develop some more information for us around expansion. And then we could move forward with that at another time, recognizing that um you probably want a quicker response than a later response. But uh, maybe we would know better what to do to expand our program for spring twenty-one as opposed to fall. Um, so with that, those are my additional comments. Uh, I don't know if we have any more general conversation here. Ms. Nguyen, are you back on by the way? Uh, I don't believe she is, so with that, um, do I hear any motions? And since Dr. Thor, you started off and everyone goes, I agree with you, a little caveat, do you have a motion for us perhaps?
I, I'm, I'd be willing to attempt one.
Go for it.
I move we commit up to thirteen point five million dollars in institutional scholarships to include clock hour students. Set a flat rate full-time twelve-plus hours at regular tuition rate. Set tuition for out-of-state students at the in-state rate for six or fewer credit hours. And up to uh five hundred thousand dollars for marketing related to the fall semester.
Um, okay, is there a second?
Second, this is Dr. Nari, I second.
Thank you, now is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, this is Dana.
Yeah, Dana.
Um, I, I agree with that, I, I, I'm wondering, uh, I don't want to abandon our discussion, but it may not be appropriate to include it in this motion. That um, having a, a, as Ms. Maya said, um, a much greater ability to advise students and potential not just in the high schools, but um for those that are in their thirties, like we talked about last week, for every eighteen-year-old is a thirty-five-year-old. Um, they're not in high school anymore and they still need that same kind of support in actually enrolling. So like I said, I'm not sure that needs to be part of this motion, but I think we're talking about spending north of thirty-three, thirty-three million dollars on this. Um, and I would like to see, since this is going to be much less, what's being proposed on the motion? That we look real closely at making a bigger investment in our advising capabilities, both for uh high school students and for those well beyond that time in their life.
Uh, I don't know that we have a dollar figure to look at, can we um? Uh, Dr. Gonzalez, I'm turning to you, do you know if there's a dollar figure attached to a particular increase in advisors? Do we know what that increase would look like? Uh, I realize I'm putting you on the spot here. Uh, or we could do an up to perhaps a dollar amount to invest in advising based on some current numbers? And amend the motion?
President Sullivan, um, members of the board, uh, if you'll recall, a few years ago, we added uh approximately thirty-two to thirty-five advisors across the district. And I would remind everybody that that is not a one-time cost, that that's an ongoing cost. I'm not remembering that, that dollar amount that it cost us at that time to add that many. Perhaps there is, uh, maybe Dr. Fisher may, may recall the number. Um, I'm not remembering off the top of my head, but that, that would be a reoccurring cost to our organization.
Correct, uh, well, it seems that we'll probably be faced with enrollment going forward. Um, what I might do here then, because uh, Mr. Sarr, I believe you're correct, that is something we lost in this discussion that seems to be pretty consistent with where folks are wanting to put an investment. Um, could we continue with the current motion and then uh make a secondary motion, another motion to or, or make a comment that we want more information on that? I, okay, help me out here, board members, what do you want to do?
Um, yeah, I, I don't think we need to muck this up with uh this discussion regarding advisors. We know some, your discussion, um, I, I have support the motion as it stands now. I think uh further discussion regarding our advising capabilities uh needs to be um talked about forward. I don't want to mess up this vote.
Good for you, okay, thank you, I'm going to go with that. So there's a motion on the, on the table, uh, seconded by Dr. Narini, we've had discussion. Um, is there any more discussion on the motion before I call a roll vote?
Hi, this is Solomon and I just wanted to say that we just need to work with our advisors and train them better so they can know what we're offering our students. They can know the programs, they know the scholarships available and what students can apply for.
I know, that's uh very important to the conversation, thank you. Any other discussion?
Could you repeat the motion again?
Uh, Dr. Thor?
I'll give it a try. I move we commit up to thirteen point five million dollars in institutional scholarships to include clock hour students. Set a flat rate full-time twelve-plus hours at regular tuition rate. Set tuition for out-of-state students at the in-state rate for six or fewer credit hours. And up to five hundred thousand dollars for marketing related to the fall semester.
Thank you.
So, so basically, Mr. Hendrix, it's, it's everything on our original list except for the twenty-five percent reduction. Uh, not yet ready to commit funding for um uh workforce, but I think clearly interest is there. And then including the clock hour students in the uh institutional scholarships.
So who's the out-of-state tuition going to cover? Is that going to cover anything outside Arizona? I mean, I think we've got several different rates.
Oh, okay, we could clarify that to be, because I, I think the intention here is we know that there is a large influx of people moving into Arizona, in fact, Maricopa County, Spacis Grand County in, in the country. And this would give us an opportunity to go on and roll those individuals in the first year that they're living in the county. Uh, when otherwise they have to wait a year to be eligible for those in-state rates. So we could say in-state, out-of-state.
Okay, um, any more discussion, this is it, my last call. Uh, being done, I'm going to uh, yes, was that a comment by anyone? All right, I'm going to call roll on the vote, Mr. Hendrix.
No.
Ms. McGrath?
No, I'd like workforce development in the motion, so no.
Dr. Narini?
Hi.
The, uh, Mr. Sarr?
Hi.
Dr. Thor?
Hi.
Uh, Mrs. Nguyen, are you on and were you able to come back? Uh, Ms. Maya? I vote aye, the motion carries on.
President Sullivan, President Sullivan, this is General Counsel Leslie Cooper. I am trying to communicate by uh text with Ms. Nguyen to see if she would like to indicate a vote in the manner in which we did a few months ago. Can we wait a moment or two to see if she's able to respond?
Sure.
She, she is, is dealing with a family emergency, so that may not be possible.
Yes, I know, she said she would alert me if she was on the phone and able to call.
I've, I've just been monitoring the, the situation um uh through IT. Um, I've tried to text her and I've not heard back, so.
Yeah, as I said, she's.
She's not able to participate.
Yes, she did tell me she would text me if she was able to come back and I haven't heard from her, but I thought I'd ask. Um, with that then, I'm going to say the motion carries on a vote of four to two with the student advisor also voting yes. And uh with that, then, Dr. Gonzalez, I believe there's direction for the tuition model going forward.
Sullivan, members of the board, thank you uh for your support and engagement in the conversation to arrive at this place.
And I did, I want to comment again, Mrs. McGrath, your comment about the workforce and Dr. Gonzalez, I think this will be important uh with Ms. Remfro. If we could have, as whenever uh is possible, information on increasing particularly a couple of those workforce classes to accommodate growing capacity, that would be helpful. I don't know a timeframe, but it seems to me that that's something we'd all be interested in knowing sooner than later. So we could move forward in that arena possibly.
President Sullivan, we will do that, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so board, and also Dr. Fisher, to you and the villages, as Dr. Narini said, want to thank you again for, over the course of three to four weeks, you're doing a tremendous amount of work and effort to bring us the information we needed uh in order to get to today's conversation. And also, Mr. Hassan, if there's any other information that can help us understand our s, community, that would be grateful, we'd be grateful to know that as well.
Will do.
With that, I'm going to uh adjourn the meeting and we will convene possibly for agenda review next week. And then another meeting on uh June twenty-three, regular scheduled board meeting. Thank you everyone and have a good evening.